This is the bylaw sub-planning committee, whatever we are, and we always plan to end by 7:30. And that I do have my mother's gavel with me here, and I'm not afraid to use it, so. More in order. I think the flower would be very workable in this format. And I just wanted to say a couple of things that I was thinking about that. Reminded of my father, who would say the times they are changing. And we used to be, you know, a nice small town, and we had a nice little committee here, and we had a good time arguing with each other and wrote some pretty good bylaws. But now, unfortunately, the push for bylaws seems to be coming from the state, and the push on the state seems to be from Washington. So it's a lot more complicated than it used to be. Which brings me to this particular bylaw, and please feel free to correct me if you wish. It seems to me that this was written by another group other than ourselves. It's already been to the lawyers, and our job seems to be to approve and to hold a hearing. So this thing is pretty much in stone right now, as I understand it. And as I say, feel free to correct.
Yeah, can I just jump in really briefly? So this has been under development. I mean, this has been referenced in a number of planning board meetings as a work in progress.
Right.
Bylaws that have worked on. It largely comes from conversations that go back a year or so with various farm entities and individuals. And it's evolved into, you know, what can we do to try to help the farmers out in this community? And it evolved into agritourism, and research has borne out that agritourism is a mature concept. So this bylaw kind of follows that line of thinking, which goes back over a year now, probably a year and a half, give or take. So it was drafted and vetted by town council, and that the agricultural commission endorses the concept. I think what's useful here is to get feedback and questions to see if it's readable, if what it does makes sense, and if there's any tweaks that you think are necessary then to propose.
I know.
Okay, if I could jump in for a minute on this as well. You know, I have to, you know, kind of agree with Marilyn. You know, the bylaw subcommittee has spent, I don't know, God knows how many years working on bylaws. I think we did a pretty decent job, you know, marijuana and all of those, all of those others. By the same token, you know, I'm just, I'm taking a look at the other bylaw committees that I'm on and the revisions or the updating we're doing on that. And the process is, it is much more complicated, I think, than it used to be. And to be perfectly honest with you, you know, if we can get help from other sources, such as getting this document, which it is still a draft. I don't know, I feel it's worthwhile for us to take advantage of it. However, with that said, I think we do need to give it more than just a cursory inspection.
Okay.
Because, once again, yes, a lot of this, I'm sure, a lot of this, first of all, a lot of it is boilerplate, but a lot of it may have been written to fit some other community. And it may not, some parts of it might not have been ours. And actually, there's a few here that I, a few comments that I want to have later on that, you know, might kind of shed some light on that.
If I could just jump in again. Part of the process here was trying to get specifications, if you will, from the ACCOM for some of the things that they would like to see. So we tried to write this as custom as possible for this, you know, for our town here, working with what that group was looking for, which was the least amount of regulation possible, the broadest uses that could be allowed, acknowledging the existing as-of-right uses and trying to get more uses by site plan. So it was kind of more, usually like the ACCOM is the client, if you will, trying to get specifications from them.
Never mind.
Just another quick comment. One other thing that is very, very different is, we now have David George, who can do this work. We didn't way back.
As a person who did most of the research on those, I'm just very glad with that development. You know, I enjoyed it then, but I'm old now. Any more comments?
No.
Not, not in general, anyway.
Okay, well, I'm glad for input from both of you, because I really wasn't too sure exactly what our mission was. And I'm glad to hear that we have some flexibility. So is there any more general comments on the bylaw, we're moving in that direction? And hearing none, I can go back to our tried and true process of just reading through this word by word. And the other thing is that I really am going to need somebody to keep some notes on boats and things like that, and times, and I would appreciate, do we have a volunteer?
I thought, Dave, I heard you said that you were going to take the minutes?
Yes, I'm gonna, I can do that, yeah, I planned on doing that.
That would, that would be good. I used to be able to write minutes and multitask, but that's a fading ability. Okay, ready to start with the draft? Well, this is for the June 2020 annual town meeting. And as we have said, it's the agricultural accessory uses, et cetera. The first segment here is the purpose. And I'll read it. Consistent with the town's open space and recreation plan, the right-to-farm bylaw, the Rural 11 prioritization project, and the MGLC 40A. What's that?
Section.
Section 3. The purpose of this section is to provide the innovative economic development opportunities for Rutland farmers. This section will benefit the general health and welfare of town residents and the region by encouraging economic development and welfare of town residents and the region by encouraging economic development and open space preservation that fits in the rural character of the town. This section will also provide opportunities for Rutland farmers to supplement their income produced through their farm operations by diversifying their operations to include such businesses that may combine agriculture, tourism, outdoor recreation, and other farm-related activities. Nothing herein is intended to limit any use protected by MGL, et cetera. Do you have any comments on this?
My only comment, and it's, it doesn't make a heck of a lot of difference. Once again, this is just some experience from my other committee membership. And this is straight from town council, reference to Mass. General laws. You do not need the M. All you need is GL, Chapter 40A, Section 3.
Oh.
Because it couldn't be any other state's law.
Gotcha, right.
Yes. And that's the, that's the standard that we're using in rewriting the general bylaws. It's all GL, not MGL.
GL.
And does, does that need to change? Hey, I'll leave that up to anybody who wants to do that.
Well, if you're, if this is what you're doing, let's get ahead of it and do it.
Yeah, it would give a little bit of consistency, anyway.
On your case, on the other bylaw committee, are you going G., period, L., period, or just GL together?
I think it's GL together. I'd have to go back and look. I can, I can, I can find out for you, like, you know, a day or so.
Okay, yeah, if you want consistency, that's, yeah, okay.
And if, just, just out of curiosity, if you, you know, take a look that you're doing MGL up here, you get onto Section 2 applicability, and then you're using Mass. Gen. L., you know?
Yeah, I just noticed that, okay, yeah.
I'm getting way too picky after being on this other committee, believe me. Oh, my God.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's important to be consistent. Shall we move ahead to Act?
That's the only, only comment I have.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. This, you have to remember, I can't see you folks, so. This section applies to agricultural-related, I always pronounce that X accessory, but I know other people use another pronunciation. Uses where the principal use of land is commercial agriculture, as that term is used in Mass. However, that's going to end up. Mass. General, Chapter 128, Section 1A, referred to as, et cetera, of the zoning act. This section creates a zoning bylaw which applies to all zoning districts within the town. To determine applicability, the applicant required to provide evidence that the principal use of the land qualifies as a commercial, as commercial agriculture pursuant to Mass. Law, et cetera. And the proposed agriculturally-related use, I'm going to paraphrase this a little bit. Use is customarily incidental and subordinate to the primary commercial agricultural use. Any comments?
Well, go ahead, Sean.
Um, only thing is, I want to make, I want to make clear that this is only for farms that have already set up for commercial agriculture. Like this, since Rutland is a right-to-farm town, this wouldn't apply to everybody, correct?
That's a good point, because that's what was running through my mind too, Sean. If, say, I had an acre and a half, and I had chickens, does that qualify you?
Well, you'd have to be registered as a farm.
Okay.
Okay, registered as a farm.
But someone, someone can start up a farm on their land and get it registered as a farm.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for loopholes here for people to buy on things.
Yeah.
For nefarious reasons, whatever.
That's because Rutland does not have an agricultural zone, period. It's tied in with residential.
Right.
So, yeah, and also, sorry, Dick.
Oh, go ahead.
Chapter 40A, Section 3, is also known as the agricultural exemption of the zoning act, and that controls for what constitutes an agricultural use in addition to the definition listed in Chapter 128, 1A. Those two work together to define what is commercial agriculture and what's not. So there are threshold requirements for land size, and also threshold requirements for, for the revenue created on-site based upon the land size.
Okay.
Okay. I guess my particular comment is, in the fourth line down, it says, "which applies to all zoning districts within the town." And I just kind of think back to, you know, when we were trying to hunt for land that we could zone industrial. We had one heck of a time, and we didn't come up with a heck of a lot. Do we want to allow, encourage, or something like that, someone to buy one of those few pieces of industrially-zoned land, start a farm, and then do this? Or do we want to reserve that for something that's maybe more, a little bit more intensely industrial? And the second, second thought on this is, does the Heights property, anywhere in there, there's no, any mention of agriculture?
Not that I know of, I've never seen it mentioned in there, no.
So what would that, what would they think of someone, you know, proposing starting a farm in the middle of the Rutland Heights property and selling ice cream?
Yeah, since this says all zones, that would, that would.
Any suggestions on how to bring this together?
Yeah, I'm not saying we don't want to do it, I'm just, I'm just bringing it to light.
No.
Could I just jump in on this?
Yep.
The zoning act is, for 48, Section 3, is permissive, and under the state statute, agriculture is allowed in all zoning districts. And if you have a town that doesn't have a specialized agricultural district, it's allowable in all zoning districts, just by operation of the statute. So to try to limit, and I think would be problematical and maybe be in conflict with the state statutes.
Okay.
I'm okay with leaving it as it is, to allow, to allow it in all zones. Because, but, but what about, like, as with the Heights? Would they still have purview to deny this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we put in someplace where it's a registered farm?
That's, that's not a bad idea.
I think, isn't that covered in the general laws?
It is covered in the statutes. I mean, as long as the applicant can prove that they meet the requirements of 48.3, then they, they carry the day. I think another registration, the statute doesn't require a registration and audit to prove it. It would only necessarily have to be proved if the building commissioner questions it. It's kind of a local decision, working with the statute.
I'm okay with leaving it.
Sure.
The only reason, I think Bonnie has a point, that it's a lot of legalese in here. And if it doesn't give the, the average person who wants to set up that ice cream stand a lot of information, you know, it's a.
We would have to first have a registered farm in order to set up this stand.
And it's a possibility.
I don't know if that's viable, if we want that.
But they could turn around and talk to other farmers or other people that have the land and maybe work with them.
Yeah, would this, would this give farms the opportunity to lease out their land to a business? Or does it have to be owned by the farm itself?
Doesn't have, David, doesn't have to be on the property?
Yeah, it has to be on the property.
That's the bit, yeah.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be owned by the farm? They could lease out a portion of their property to a business owner to, you know, to set up?
Anyone listed.
An ice cream stand.
Yeah, like Baskin Robbins can come in, I don't even know if Baskin Robbins still, but, you know, you know, they can come in and say, hey, you have a farm, we'd like to set up an ice cream shop on your farm.
Well, if I could jump in, and the controlling factor here is that not to have the ice cream stand on the farm, a substantial amount of the product used to make the ice cream has to either be harvested on the farm itself or grown within Massachusetts. So you couldn't just have a pure commercial operation, which does not have any ties to agriculture in the Commonwealth or in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be easily get around, though. You can, you can, yeah, I mean, for a company to come in, they can outsource to the state, you know, to keep it local.
I thought the intent of this bylaw was basically to help the farmers. And if they want to lease it out and then have somebody, you know, sell Massachusetts-grown products, that's what I thought this bylaw was for, right?
Yes, once again, it's, it's, it's the product. Where is the product grown? Is the product grown on-site in town here, or is the product grown in Massachusetts and used to create a value-added product on-site? If the answer is yes, then the entity doing it is really secondary.
Okay.
It's really where the material is coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as it's mass-grown, that's fine.
And you're saying that it's fine that someone else runs the stand?
Yeah. Aren't at least, and it's still the farmer who's making the, yeah.
The products, yeah.
To be making the product and/or leasing the product, property, and making money that way, too.
How's that sound, Dave?
Well, if the idea is, I think it's, is it adequate as is?
Yeah.
Yes. I think so.
Okay. I didn't hear what you said. Ready to move on?
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Okay. Onto definitions. I'm going to just re-paraphrase this. Shall include farming in all branches and the cultivation and tillage of soil, dairy, production, cultivation, growing, and harvesting of any agricultural, agricultural, floricultural, horticultural commodities. The growing and harvesting of forest products on forest land, raising land, livestock, including horses, the keeping of horses as a commercial enterprise, keeping of bees, fur-bearing animals, I'm still thinking about that one. And any forestry or lumbering operations performed by farmer who is, et cetera. Is everybody comfortable, have you finished reading that?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as we put in parentheses, especially beavers.
There's a fur-bearing animal.
I think we need a couple of good mink farms in Rutland.
Right.
No, I, yeah, the Kinkners, way back. Yeah, mink farms.
Yep.
And you know what, they fed the minks, don't you?
No.
Fresh fish, and then, you think, you think Mr. Jordan's property stinks when he spreads the mink? You should have smelled that.
I can imagine.
I've seen a few minks in the wild, they're kind of neat little animals.
Yeah.
Okay, anything, anyone wants to add, subtract?
So, under value-enhanced, there's the word packaging of agricultural commodities grown. What, what in your mind does that mean? Does that, would that lend us to packaging plants? Probably not, but.
I can provide an example, Bonnie. If you pack, if you have honey, if you have bees, you cultivate honey on-site, and you package that. Packaged honey would be an example. If you have bees.
Maple syrup or stuff like that.
Correct.
Or lettuce over in Devon's, in the hydroponic.
Or when Jordans send their turkeys up to Mass, in Mass, to have them packaged.
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Agricultural, agri-commercial means the commercial activities designed to market to and bring the public to the farm enterprise for the farm-related experience and increase the sale of agricultural products to the public with the express purpose of enhancing the agricultural viability of farm enterprise. Any comments?
No.
No.
They can put a camper.
That, that, that's a, in this ag commercial, or maybe it's not here. Does, does that give them, are we giving them the ability to set up, like, campgrounds on their farm for the commercial standpoint?
I think that's.
Campgrounds are covered elsewhere in the zoning bylaw as an allowable residential use already.
Okay, okay.
It doesn't really pertain to that, per se.
And these are definitions. I think as a general definition, that stands.
Yeah, I just wondered if, is that something we should exclude somewhere else? Campgrounds on farms, or is that, is that acceptable?
Well, if, if the campground is located in a residential zone, I mean, you could have, you could have more than one principal use on a property at a time. So if campground is a lot, it's only a lot of the residential zones.
Okay.
So you could have principal uses, more than one principal use. Use is a lot under this bylaw, and use is a lot elsewhere in other parts of the bylaw. Could be on the same property.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask that, because I just wanted to make sure we covered that.
Do you believe, Tim, that it has to go through any camping? Because I remember half of it had to go through the select board on that.
Okay, all right, good enough.
Agri-entertainment means entertainment such as a seasonal event, festival, contest, music, party, or other time-specific events designed specifically to bring to a farm enterprise for farm-related national experience, expeditous, laying, combination, farm setting, and products of the agricultural operation with the ultimate goal to encourage the purpose of it.
Plant review.
Products. Agri-entertainment is to enhance the agricultural viability.
And this, this agri-entertainment, that's where, if I remember farther down here, that's where the site plan review comes in, correct?
Yes, weddings, festivals, music, et cetera.
Okay, so that's covered, that's basically, if they're going to do that, they've got to come through the planning board for a site plan review.
Well, yeah, maybe. I'm still just, I just have to wonder on this one a little bit, you know? You know, what about someone, you know, says, you know, hey, I want to host a rock festival, you know? Rock around the cow flap or something like this, and then attracts, you know?
Why do they do that?
Yeah, didn't they do that in '69 in New York?
I think I heard something about that.
Yeah. Maybe it was '70, I don't remember the exact date.
Such as.
They brought, like Dale Perkins around Christmas time type of thing, and that's what comes through my mind.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good thing, let's just put it that way.
Yeah.
And Lilac Farm that has something or other down on Bain Street?
Yeah.
In the fall, I think.
Yeah, I believe he does.
I think that definition's okay. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
Okay with it as well.
Same here.
Okay. Agritourism means that tourism designed specifically to bring the public to a farm enterprise or farm-related educational experience by displaying a combination of the farm setting and products of agricultural operations with the ultimate goal to encourage the purchase of agricultural products. Including farm stay programs, entertainment events on the farm, fundraising activities, community events. Agritourism is designed to enhance the agricultural viability of the farm operations.
Dick, is that the definition of Heifer Project?
Yeah, really.
Good point.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Like about forty buses a week.
Uh, any comments?
I'm good with it.
I, I am too.
Yeah, no problem.
Um, value enhanced agricultural production. The enhanced enhancement or improvement of an agricultural commodity or of an animal or plant product produced on the farm to a higher value. The enhancement or improvement includes but not limited to marketing, processing, transforming, and/or packaging of agricultural commodities grown, raised, or otherwise created on the premise premises controlled by the owner with the agricultural operation into a product of higher value.
Hey, this is, you, you bag up your cow manure and you can get more money for it. Well, I, I was thinking of flip your own cow patty.
The only thing, the only thing I was worried about this was, you know, can, can the farming facility turn into an industrial? That's the word I'm looking for, in, in industrial operation?
Well, that, that's the one thing, because you had mentioned Randy and the turkeys, that's.
Yeah.
And I do know that once upon a time Randy talked about there is no local places to take care of your animals around here.
Yeah.
So, um.
I know my sister-in-law, when she had pigs, she had to go up to, I think it was Vermont or New Hampshire, to have any processing done. If I remember right, because that was the closest USDA facility was up in the, I think it was Vermont, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I do believe that Paul got one up there now.
Okay. I guess I'm okay with that. I just, I just was worried about, you know, getting in a, getting an industrial operation. I guess that'd be a good thing in Rutland.
Well, if, if, if I, if I'm being an ejector, that wouldn't really be like a tourism type thing, you know, that's what am I trying to say here? To have a farmer put in, like a packing plant on his, that wouldn't draw people in to come. I think the whole thing is to draw people in for tourism as, you know, agritourism, right?
Yeah, like.
Some business, I would say, I would imagine some businesses wouldn't be allowed. Wouldn't fall under tourist-type business. No one's going to want to come see chicken being processed and butchered, you know, I mean.
Or hot dogs being made.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and, and that's my question for this, this def, I know it's just a definition. Is there something farther down we should, we, we should put in for, you know, maybe this has to go through some type of review, you know, building, site plan, something like that?
I have a question. You're talking about the farm enhancement morphing into something larger, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, Marilyn.
I think that.
Is that a bad thing?
And I think it would move out of this bylaw.
And I think, I mean, this case here, there are certain uses that are more directly associated with agricultural uses generally, which go with forty-eight-three, as opposed to the tourism aspect.
Yeah.
Right.
Have things that belong with forty-eight-three more intimately. So this is probably in a lot of accessory use under forty-eight-three.
Okay.
I think what we're trying to do is just acknowledge existing agricultural uses that are, are accessory and then ones that enhance and go towards the tourism aspect.
Okay. All right.
I think so. Accessory farm store, an onsite retail outlet for farm products that is subordinate to the primary commercial agricultural use of growing and harvesting of crops, raising of lives, livestock, designed to bring the public to the farm to urge them to purchase agricultural projects.
Yeah, this is one where I was wondering, should we add something in there that? So the farm store is, you know, using as a percentage of Massachusetts. So what I'm looking, farm products, you know, like, you know, I don't know, I'm just throwing a number out, fifty-one percent of the retail, retail outlet has to be Massachusetts grown and, or, or produced or something like that?
Well, I, I think so. I think, I think in, in what you have happening with accessory farm store, it's only accessory if in fact that's occurring. I think we're using the language of substantially grown on the site or in Massachusetts.
Oh, okay.
So once again, there's a nexus between these uses and forty-eight-three.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
I just, I, what I was trying to get away from is putting a farm store up and, to what Sean said earlier, and bringing stuff in from every place else and selling it within the store, but because it's a, it, it's on a farm, it's okay. And that's what I, I guess I just didn't want to see happen. I don't have a problem if it's, it's a farmer selling, you know, corn that he got from a, a farm out in Hadley or, or like cheese curds from out there. I'm fine with that. I just, so anyhow, that's all.
From Mexico.
Yeah, I was trying to get away from Chinese and, uh, and other products that, uh.
The, the percentage, that, that would, you know, that, that'd be a little scary.
All right.
Because, you know, it'd be nice to talk to somebody in that. Um, but I think at the present time for any accessories, this, this is probably going to be very small anywhere.
Okay, yeah.
Have we covered this someplace in our other bylaws as far as farm stores? It seemed as though we had talked about this before. We can't remember if we did.
It's not coming to me.
The only place I can even remotely think was that possibly in our sign bylaw, we, we, we allowed, like, you know, signs for a farm store or something like that.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, Norm, I don't see the option to raise my hand here. Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I hopped on a little late.
Who is?
Who is this?
This is City, I'm in the box.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah.
Um, first, Dave, thanks for putting in all the hard work for this. It looks really good. My question is pertaining to, and maybe this is a dumb question, I think you guys might have covered this already. But it was just something that I came up with that, that I had as a question is, the the, the taxes on the allowable accessory use is, I mean, if these properties are in sixty-one A, are we gonna like, portion off a portion, a piece of those for a commercial rate, or how does that work in terms of how we collect the taxes on these uses?
Um, it's my understanding that if the uses are accessory to use is allowed under the agricultural exemption, that that is not a, a, a tax classification issue per se. I mean, if, if a new building is built, then there would be an assessment that happens for that building and taxes would go up because of the structure being built. If there's a restaurant that's in place, then there would be meals taxes. But I don't think a use like this would automatically disqualify a land that's currently held under sixty-one A and automatically disqualify it. In fact, I understand that the MDR, and maybe Dick, you can help with this one, that the MDR is more is less restrictive than, than they once were in terms of uses that can occur on lands that are held in the agricultural preservation.
That is correct.
Well, I, I just, to follow up on my question, and again, my question is, is this best practice? Because coming from and working for the state of Kentucky, you had a situation, for example, where you have a, a distillery which all the farming and the grain production is done there on the distillery for spirits. But then you're also going to have a, a, a building that is used to sell wares, whether it be, you know, bourbon or merchandise or whatever. It, would that enterprise then be taxed, I guess, the same as the rest of the farm? Or is that going to be, are we collecting commercial tax rate on a portion of that property because of those sales?
I don't, Mitch and Dick or Norm or, I don't think Rutland has a buy tax rate at this point. I think we just have a standard tax rate, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know, you know, sixty-one A, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure, obviously, it gives relief from land tax.
Right.
But does it give relief for buildings?
No.
No, I didn't think so. So any additional building or that sort of thing, they would be paying the, the standard tax rate. As well as any sales would be the state tax applied onto that product that's sold. If it's non-food.
Yeah, and then to, I, I, I think David said that, or somebody said it, that like Flo's, for example, that sells meals. There's a meals tax associated with that. Rutland gets a piece of that.
Right.
Okay, that, that answers my question. And again, thank you, Dave. And Dave, I know you put a lot of work into this. Is, is this based on what other communities are doing in terms of, of this particular bylaw?
Um, I'm actually working on a presentation, which I hope to address many of these questions. I can tell you that what seems to be, and I've used a lot of different resources, some of my most valuable resources, I think, are from Indiana, Michigan, there's a Vermont. What we seem to see in Massachusetts, a lot of is more just a general reference to MGL chapter forty-eight, section three, which then requires interpretation of what that actually does. What this bylaw does is make uses which are most likely accessory, codifies those and lists them out, it takes away the interpretation. And then it expands, this is an expansive bylaw, not a restrictive one. And it's expansive by bringing uses into the fold as accessory by site plan. So I think there's not, I, I could not find a lot of examples like this. I could be mistaken. And if you were to research, you may say, Dave, well, what about this one and the other one and the other one? But we did due diligence to find whether this had been done in this way. But we seem to see mostly it's, it's references to forty-eight-three without being as extensive as this bylaw.
Thank you. And I, again, I appreciate it. It's very well-written.
I appreciate that from you. Thank you very much.
No, and, and you know, it's, uh, it's also, um, I know you have a presentation, you're always well-prepared for these things. I, I just, I wanted to hop on and, and ask my questions now because the board, obviously, is going to be looking to place these things next week. And I just want to make sure I have an understanding. I guess my last question to you is, and I think, again, I think this is good for the community, but not to be a stickler on questions, but just to clarify. The accessory uses, what or who determines and how, what is an accessory use versus a primary use? If you have a property that, um, you know, there's very little actual agricultural farming, but sets up commercial enterprises, which becomes a majority of kind of the business on that property, how is that determined?
Sure, sure. The way in on this is in order to qualify as an accessory use, there has to be the principal use on the site of agriculture as, as governed by the statutes. If that does not exist, these accessory uses are not available. So these are only available to an actual bona fide farm. If that does not exist, these accessory uses would not be valid because they're not tied to a legitimate principal use.
Okay, great. And again, that, that clarifies that. So I mean, this isn't my forte, so I really appreciate the time. Uh, thank you, Norm, for allowing me to kind of go off there a little bit.
Well, yeah, Marilyn is the chair of this.
Yeah. Hi.
All right, Norm, I thought just automatically you were the, I apologize.
You what?
I'm, okay.
No committee, Mitch, so.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes, I'm good. Yeah, you know, that last thing that, that Mitch brought up. And I get, you know, maybe many accessory, you know, works fine and dandy. I was just thinking, I'm just wondering if somewhere a word maybe like subordinate to, you know, the, the main agricultural activity would, would fit into this.
Actually, um, we, we could add that if you like. Accessory is a defined term under the zoning laws. An accessory means incidental and customary to the principal use. So it's a two-prong test. It has to be both incidental and customary. If you can't get that nexus, then it falls apart. So accessory use does have longstanding currency in mass, uh, mass laws. However, it could be amplified wherever, wherever accessory shows up. I mean, right here, accessory farm store that is subordinate to the principal, primary commercial agricultural use. You could say is subordinate incidental customer. You could always emphasize it.
Yeah, the thing is, if, you know, if you put subordinate into that, prevents it from becoming the main business.
That's exactly the point. Yeah.
I don't know, it's just a thought.
I, I actually, um, that was kind of rumbling around in my head without developing into a thought, but I, I definitely like that.
Would you like the indication to stress that it is incidental and customary? Or is subordinate adequate for this purpose? Because, you know, in a farm store, it's, it's highly likely that some of the goods, that, that the substantial amount of goods will be either produced on the site or in Massachusetts, but there also will be other goods that are being sold, such as retail products, that also help to subsidize the farm activity, which may not be by themselves incidental or, or subordinate.
Or produced in Massachusetts.
Sorry, Ken?
Or, yeah, the, the other products, like you said, could be sold that might not be produced in Massachusetts, like, you know, lighters or.
Christmas ornaments.
Yeah, TJ, something, you know, yeah, some, some type of sundry.
Correct. If, if, if the definition is too restrictive, it would create the issue with the farm entity having the ability to sell t-shirts or glassware, if it's a brewery or what have you.
Yeah.
He doesn't even check buildings. How the hell is he? No.
Okay. Do we have any? I'm kind of feeling a little lost in this conversation, that I'm not sure that it's jumping into anything substantial at the moment. So the issue is in the naming and it's, uh, whether or not the, the word substantial should be included in here, saying that the accessory. it's, it's not really substantial part of the farm.
Well, that, that, that's what subordinate would tend to imply.
Yeah, that's, that's why, I mean, that first sentence sort of says it all, I think. It's subordinate to the primary, commercial agricultural use of, you know, of the farm. So I think that's okay.
Yeah.
It, where does, where does it say, oh, it does say subordinate.
Yeah, yeah, it's the first sentence, yeah, it's got it in there, to the primary. So I think, Norm, Marilyn, I, I think that covers it.
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
I think it's okay.
Yeah.
All right. Which is the next paragraph? What, which is, what, what comes next here?
Agriculture-related products.
Yeah.
Pardon me, say it again.
Agriculture-related products is the next one we have to go through.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I see that's subordinate now. Accessory farm stores to attract customers and promote the sale of agricultural products. Such items include, but are not limited to, all agricultural, et cetera. Animal feed, baked goods, ice cream, ice cream-based desserts, beverages, jams, honey, I want to go shopping. Gift items, food, stuffs, clothing, and other items promoting farming and agriculture and value-added cultural products and production, production, production on site. Culturally related.
I don't have any trouble with that one.
No, that actually, that actually lends to, what are those animals? Oh, llamas.
Alpacas.
Alpacas, thanks, Norm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Farm enterprise means farming operation that is entitled to promotion under that law. Which is kind of a including sentence statement here, comment time. Move to Section 4, Permit Procedures Authority. Planning Board shall act as the administrating authority for the site plan required. Under this section, the site plan requirements may be found in the document titled Site Plan Approval Regulations as amended. Otherwise, for uses believed to be allowed as of right, which do not require site plan review, the applicant shall register the use of the Agricultural Commission. The Commission. And Planning and Community Development Office, and the Office by notifying both the Commission and the Office in writing as the writing, as of right, uses at least 30 days prior to the commencing said use allowed by this bylaw. The applicant shall be responsible for obtaining any and all other necessary and applicable federal, state, and local permits and other licenses as may be required to the operation of the validity issued building permit. The dimensional requirements of underlying zoning districts shall apply to each agriculturally-related accessory as permitted under this section. Okay.
Well, I've got two things on this one.
Okay.
First one is right in the very first line of Section 4. Planning Board shall act as the administrating authority for site plan review.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. That's number one. And the next to the last sentence in this section makes no sense to me at all. The applicant shall also be responsible for obtaining any and all other necessary applicable federal, state, and local permits, that's fine, and/or licenses, as may be required, prior to operation of a validly issued building permit. Huh?
Uh-oh. I think what, what's, what's, what's supposed to happen there is that before, before an entity is allowed to get a building permit, they have to be able to approve that they have all licenses that are necessary if asked. Depending on how far the Building Commissioner wants to push it, you know, they could go down to quite a number of licenses. That's really just methods to be inclusive, to let the applicant know that it's not just the site plan, it's not just the building permit. They are responsible for other things.
Yeah, I, I, I see all of that part. The more I'm looking at it, the one word that just doesn't fit in there is operation. The grant.
How about issuance, how would issuance of a building permit?
That, that would, that would make it fine.
All right, thanks. Issuements of a building permit.
Except, except. Now you're using issuance and issued. Only two words apart. But you certainly, you certainly got the idea that I was trying to put forward anyway.
All right, cut that.
I, I've got, the, the one question that jumps out that we talked about earlier is we don't have authority for RDIC to do any site plan review. So that, is that there's no farm, okay, I guess it's a moot point because there's no farm in the RDIC, or could be. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and what also, what also applies to the RDIC is that any uses allowed at the RDIC are subject to an RFP proposal. So there's another level of, of bureaucracy, if you will, for the, for the Heights property. So there's not really, as of right, isn't really as of right, it means through the RFP process. So if they're not satisfied with what they're getting for a submitted for, for the RFP, then the, the use would fill there.
Okay. And then I got to ask the question. We've got this all for building permits and requirements for zones. Is it assumed that, like, any inspections for food, for, you know, they're selling mass products, does that fall under? I guess I'm looking to see, that falls under the Building Inspector, the Board of Health? So any inspections to these is handled by a different board?
Right, so in that case, if a building permit is needed, then the applicant would have to apply for a building permit. We have the online permitting. In that case, building permits are sent out for review by other entities such as the Board of Health and DPW and other entities. So if the applicant has not gone directly to the Board of Health to get the permit, it ought to be flagged under the building permit.
Okay, I just was wondering.
If the building permit's necessary.
Yeah, after they get this, and, you know, they, they build the stand, the food retail, the accessory use, is this bylaw meant to define on what happens, you know, what procedures needs to be done after it's operational? Is that?
Yes, for example, if there was an entity that has dairy products and they make ice cream on site, that would be subject, I believe, to an annual health inspect. The ice cream store itself would be subject to an annual health inspection, just in the same way that the Dunkin' Donuts is subject to an annual health inspection.
And that, that's under other mass general laws, correct?
Yes, that would be the laws that govern how the Board of Health operates.
Okay, all right. Farm stands and stuff like that, they'd be under inspection of the Board of Health, then basically make sure they're up there, can, are, they're conforming to their requirements for a food distribution.
Yes.
Okay.
That, that would be part of the E permitting?
No, Dick, I think once it, what I was talking about was after it's operational.
After, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was more concerned with, because the permitting process, we've got it pretty good with that E permitting, a good system to go through. It's just after the effect.
No, usually it's something like that, the Board of Health is right on it.
Okay.
So the Board of Health is going to check to see that they're bought in Massachusetts? Ask the questions, please, or I'll get on the meeting.
So.
Put her on, put her on.
So you're telling me that the Board of Health is going to be responsible for checking to make sure that the produce that is being sold is from Massachusetts?
No, the Board of Health will be checking for the overall health quality of the, of the uses happening in the structure. If there's any question or controversy whether or not the store is engaging in agricultural uses, then that would be the Building Commissioner to get supporting information from the operator.
So the building, the building inspector is going to be the one that's going to be responsible for not only inspecting all the new houses going in, but also to double-check to make sure that all of these agricultural accessory use places are doing what they need to do?
Upon the issuance of the original building permit, if it's in question, and it's not a, if it's not, if it's, if it's a narrow case and it's in question, and it's not obvious that the use itself is an accessory, is an agricultural use and/or an accessory agricultural use, the Building Commissioner can request additional information at the time of the building permit submission. After the building permit is issued, if there are renewal, if there are renewable inspections, say from Health, Health Department that are necessary, those would happen on an annual basis. The Building Commission would get involved again if someone had a complaint attacking whether the use, in fact, is agricultural or not.
Okay, so I, I keep hearing that this is only for something that's grown on-site or something that is grown within Massachusetts. Who is going to be the one that's going to be double-checking that?
That's a good point.
If it's an as-of-right use that has to be registered with the Agricultural Commission, I believe the Agricultural Commission has expertise, and if they see a red flag, then that's going to raise questions. If it's the Building Commission needs additional information, and it's not obvious, some uses are obvious, if, you know, and some are not. The Building Commission always has the discretion to ask for more information to substantiate whether the use is in fact a primary agricultural or not.
Okay, so the Agricultural Commission is an appointed board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so although they all have other jobs, they're going to be the ones that are going to go around and check to see that the produce is actually being sold that was grown in Massachusetts?
I, I think, I don't think, this, this bylaw is not meant to be overly burdensome to the operators. I think in many cases, does not likely to be a controversy. If there is one, then that can be flagged by the Agricultural Commission upon receipt by an entity that they would like to operate, or by the Building Commissioner. I mean, as, as it stands now, if you have any of a number of farms that, that sell eggs, you know, the, the Building Commissioner isn't going to, going to question that if it's obvious that the eggs originate on a particular farm. I don't, I only see if there's a narrow question and needs to be sorted out, then the additional information can be requested for those particular instances.
Okay, so it's Agricultural Commission and then Building Inspector is who's going to be the two convening sources, except for a site plan review where it's the Planning Board?
Right, I'm not sure if you have a copy of the bylaw, or if you have access to it here.
I do, I have it.
So Section 4, if the use is believed to be as of right, the entity has responsibility of notifying the Agricultural Commission in writing. And if there's any, and then what would happen there, if there's any questions that develop because of the notice as of of the notice in writing, then questions can start to be answered at that time to try to clarify exactly, you know, why the applicant believes it is as of right.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about, I'm not too worried about the, getting the original up and running. I'm, I'm worried that once we get this in place, we're going to have people that are going to be bringing in everything from everywhere, and it's going to defeat the purpose, which we were trying to help agriculture within Massachusetts.
Dick, I don't know if you maybe can help on what, what, what happens or mechanisms for enforcement from your experience?
I don't know if you heard you. That, that, that's that's a good question for me as well, because like, like the milk for the, for those ice cream stands, or the ingredients for that brewery, like the hops, the barley, all that should be grown in Massachusetts, correct?
Correct.
So how, how do we make sure that, that it is? Because if you can get hops from Ohio at a cheaper price than he can get inside Massachusetts, who's to stop him from buying out of state and importing it in? Or, you know, not just, you know, the hops or any product.
Are we talking about the end product?
Yes.
Or the ingredients?
Well, the, the ingredients and the end product, the end product should be comprised from ingredients grown in Massachusetts.
But you're not going to have everything grown in Massachusetts, there's going to be spices and things like that are not going to be grown.
So Dick, I think the question is, how do you keep people from skirting the procurement? So in the case of, of the Maple operations, SAP, how do, how do we, you know, how do we really know that they're going to be operating above board and no one's going to be trying to play games? You know, what's the real assurance that we have? I think that seems to be the gist of the question. You know, is it likely to happen, we're going to have a lot of people trying to skirt the issue? Or you think we're going to have good operators who are local entities in town and are going to be respecting, you know, the intent of this?
As far as SAP, yes, you're not going to go tapping a pine tree, that's for sure. But it is a, a good question in a way, and go back to Tim's, you know, percentage of what the heck is going to be on some of the stuff. There, there's got to be a percentage, I feel. And, but I, I believe if you do have a distillery or brewery in, in the state, not a brewery, that I thought it was a state law, it must, hops must be grown in the state.
Yes, on that farm, on the farm beer maker, that's correct.
Yeah.
And I think that we also need to, to come back a little bit, or consider that we're talking about smaller enterprises on a farm, rather than, you know, not a large brewery.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
No.
Not on that part.
So we're all set with this. Which was to start checking these off, I was keeping my finger on it, but then I moved my finger. So this up to Section 5, is that correct?
Provision.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Are we on Section 5?
So, yeah, she left off at Section 5.
Okay, thank you. You were all answering at once, I couldn't
Sorry.
Understand. allowable accessory uses, unless otherwise specified below, agro-entertainment, agro-commercial, agri-tourism shall permit accessory uses provided that the primary use of the land is commercial agricultural, which covers some of our questions previously. The parcel has The parcel has a minimum of and the sales meet the requirements of Mass General Law, et cetera. Examples of these uses include, but not limited, the following: fruit, pumpkin or related you pick, corn mazes, crop art, I'm, I'm assuming you all have this in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, educational, walking and bicycle tours, petting, feeding zoos, hayrides, cut your own Christmas trees, agricultural museums, I thought that would be kind of interesting. Living history farms, processing and demonstrations, here are those chickens again. On-farm farmers markets and roadside stands, on-farm restaurants, where a significant portion of products sold is prepared on the site with farm crops grown or raised on the site. So that says a significant portion.
Yeah, and that's, I was going to ask Marilyn on that one, what's the definition of significant?
Fifty-one percent.
Well, I'm with you, I'm with you, Dick, on that, but as we know, there's always an attorney somewhere in the crowd, that significant definition, what does that mean?
Void for vagarity.
What was that?
It means void for vagarity, that's a legal term. It means it's not specific enough, so it's meaningless.
Yeah. That's norm what I was worried about.
Right, anybody else could worry?
Can I, can I actually make a comment, Marilyn?
Of course.
Not to, I, I know that that was the, the significant comment, and I understand the reasoning behind it, but for example, when I worked in Kentucky, and you have a lot of the new wineries popping up that have tasting rooms, a significant amount of grapes, depending on the kind of wine, or it's still imported from other parts of the country or from Europe, and are mixed with the locally grown crops to create that. So I think that's where that comes from, the fifty-one percent. I don't think that is necessarily by itself detrimental. And I think when Dave was putting this together with best practice from some of those states that he talked about, Indiana, I think he mentioned maybe perhaps Ohio, it's kind of the same kind of deal. Dave, I don't know if you want to like talk about to that at all, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think part of the, part of the specification from the AdCom and part of what the research shows is that the flexibility should be there, as opposed to being so overly prescriptive that it doesn't accomplish these goals. I think the significant, as Dick points out, is your general, your fifty percent rule. You know, if someone wants to come in and say that even twenty-five percent of material is grown in Massachusetts and they want to call that significant, well, I think that, that's going to feel. Um, you know.
So.
I'm fine, I just, again, too many contracts I've gone through and, and words that are left to open interpretation usually lend to a lot of problems.
Well, yeah, what I mean, and even just the, the term portion of products. And I'll just take, you know, wine for an example. In, in, let's say Massachusetts, someone might have a nice apple orchard, so they might make apple wine. Well, okay, that's one kind of wine. But they might want to also sell regular grape wine, but they don't have any grapes. So they might just import bottles of grape wine. Only forty-nine percent of the bottles they sell are imported bottles of grape wine, the fifty-one percent are their own apple wine.
Hmm, that's fine.
Okay, so, y, y, you know, there's kind of a little different thing, it isn't that a significant portion of the ingredients in it have to be, it's just put all the products together and he's got to sell more apple wine than he can grape wine.
Okay.
All right, and it's prepared on site with crops grown or raised.
The grape wine wouldn't be prepared on site at all.
Right, but it would be, the significant portion would be apple wine then.
Right.
All right, with me, any other comment?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Tours, wine tastings, where this is pretty much what we were talking about. Products sold, prepared on site with farm crops, okay. Brewery tours and beer tasting, where a significant portion of products sold is prepared on crops, grown and raised on site. Similar. Liquor tours and liquor tastings. Any comment on those as a group?
I'm assuming that means either raised on site or in Massachusetts? Is that implied or does that need to be said?
I think if you go back to the definition of the forty-eight, Section 3, and what that requires in terms of the thresholds for revenue or the thresholds for land, then it's the Massachusetts connection is coming out of the statutory definition.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Sixteen ice cream and bakery facilities where a significant portion of products sold is prepared on site with farm crops grown and raised on site.
But there's something missing there, Marilyn. Antested by Dick Williams.
Go ahead.
Joking. Antested by Dick Williams.
Ah.
Ice cream.
Right.
Uh, we've got a, we've got a town food taster.
Oh, I tell you, I'm, I'm hungry right now.
Really?
Yeah, I haven't had supper either.
I had a bowl of rice roasted, cereal. Recreation, fishing, hunting, bird watching, natural features. Horseback riding, rural bread, bed and breakfast.
That's where I've got a question, Marilyn.
Mm-hmm.
The latest thing in, throughout the country are these things called yurts. Y-U-R-T.
Oh, yurt.
Yeah, they're putting up yurts throughout the country on a lot of farming properties and, you know, charging three hundred bucks a night to get the farming experience.
And their B and Bs.
Yeah, is that something that? I guess I'm asking, is that something Rutland wants?
I, I think that Sam had some friends in, in Barry that he went to high school with, and they had a, a farm, a genuine working farm, and had it was actually more of bed and breakfast, but I could see, and then they had activities during the day. It would seem like you were going to be doing, you know, some kind of farm activities, visit the farm and stay overnight in a yurt. That would.
Yeah.
Be all right with me. The other thing going on is the tiny houses. Stay overnight in a tiny house and milk cows for breakfast.
All right, I just wanted to throw it out there.
Actually, I saw three, uh, three small cabins a while back that just appeared out on Main Street, right at the Holden Line.
Yeah.
Next to House Stand?
Yeah.
That's Lila Kedge, that's, that's Ryan, that's Randy Jordan's cousin.
Right.
I think they have three of them.
Came from Heppa to build them.
So I have to sign off. Everybody stay well and.
All right.
See you, see you next time, I've got a dog throwing up.
Oh geez. Take care, Lonnie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stay well.
Consuming agricultural products and garden tours, which brings to mind people marching through the cornfields. allowable accessory uses requiring a site plan review. The following accessory agriculturally related uses are subject to site plan review by the planning board. Weddings, receptions, private parties. My only question about that, excuse me.
Spaghetti on the thing, on the stove. Sorry.
Hello, Marilyn?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm here, my phone is ringing, somebody else got it, okay. I'm sorry, I missed the question, I think it was Tim?
No, I, I was, Marilyn, you were going to, you were going to comment on, on one, and I was curious what your comment was.
No, I was just wondering, and it wasn't so much here as it was somewhere else I was reading, where I wasn't sure that you know, what kind of parking regulations, for example, being that it's the planning board. What are we looking for?
Yeah, I can answer that, if I could just jump in, so right now, the zoning bylaw doesn't have a parking requirement in any of the districts. So what we would be looking for is for the applicant to provide what they believe is best practice for parking based on what similar uses elsewhere, and the planning board evaluating that to see whether they look at the plan, listen, listen to the use, listen to the number of people, hours of operation, and think that that makes sense or not. If it doesn't, then the planning board can call for more parking than was proposed or less.
And could you call in, I'm sure you could, but is it covered here, like, you know, call in some extra resources from the town? The police department, for example, and what kind of, you know, what kind of parking? In, in other words, and, you know, how, get people from the town, you know, other professionals in the town to give you some criteria on what you should be looking for.
A lot of that is listed further down.
But to Marilyn's question, the answer is yes on that, because if it's a site plan review, the site plan application is going to be distributed to the police department and also fire. And we're very likely to contact police directly to see if, if this jives with, with, with what they understand as the correct amount of parking, so yeah.
All right, so that's, would be assumed in this, this this, this, one more B here that we're looking at.
Yes, and also the planning board can place reasonable conditions upon any site plan approval, including cross street parking in loading areas.
Marilyn, to the chair, if I, if I may.
Yes.
Dave, what about insurance requirements, something like zip lines would require a certain amount of liability insurance? Is that something that the site plan review is also going to look at?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think that's not really a site plan aspect in and of itself. I think for the purposes of zip lines, where would the zip line go? What's the average number of patrons, where would they park? Are there any other things that they would buy in order to protect in ziplining and what have you? I think that's a private matter that the applicant, would behoove the applicant to have sufficient liability insurance for whatever activity they want to engage in.
So I guess my, my follow-up question is, does that then, if for example, there's a zip line installed at one of these properties and there is an injury that is substantial, does that default back to the town having passed this, or is this on the individual farm that is, you know, purveying this, because if there's no insurance for a commercial entity that, that it is my understanding that that activity is not necessarily properly set up, who's checking that?
Well, I think what happens here, if it's on private property, the town would not be liable for issuing the permit. The owner of the property would be liable for not having sufficient insurance, as opposed to allowing something to happen in the, put in the right of way. So for example, and this is a discussion that we'll be having soon, is outdoor seating in the public right of way. So if there's outdoor seating in the public right of way and the town allows that, then in that particular case, the town, I believe, has a stronger standing gas for liability insurance, if it's in the public right of way. If the board cannot be satisfied that there's sufficient liability to allow outdoor seating in the public, then, then the board will not have to approve that, but this is on private property. So this would become a burden of the property owner, him or herself.
To, to that point, my follow-up question to this particular section of the bylaw is none of these uses are accessory uses that are related to agriculture, right? So you're non-motorized, active recreational. If we don't have the ability to tax a commercial entity as a commercial property that is purveying these things, again, when does this become accessory versus primary? Because it's my understanding that some of the agricultural properties that are at least zoned as such in town don't actually produce an agricultural product. And if the majority of the income is going to be derived from these five industries, what, what are we, what are they in sixty-one A for, and why are we not collecting a commercial tax revenue from these endeavors?
Well, I think in these cases here, these, these uses are, these uses cannot be primary principal uses. These would have to be accessory, so it would have to be established that there is a primary agricultural endeavor at the site in order to get into, into the by right ones or the site plan ones.
So like, for example, the, the disc golf, you would then have to, let's say you have a, a property that's fifty acres and there's twenty acres portioned off for disc golf, and they're not used for any agricultural use whatsoever, what does that mean in terms of, of that business if, again, there's a large portion of, of revenue generated from disc golf versus what is, you know, grown and, and produced on that property?
Well, I think that's where you get into the site plan review, and I think the question to ask on the site plan review is to the applicant, your responsibility to get the site plan approval, in this case of disc golf, is to prove to the satisfaction of the board that it is actually accessory.
Okay, is it, is it appropriate then, perhaps, for the site plan review in the cases of these types of activities to look at, you know, insurance requirements and, you know, proof of insurance? Because I know that that's best practice in other communities when it comes to these activities, particularly concerts, festivals, or special events. Worcester in particular has pretty stringent regulations on that on private property.
I can look into that question with town council to see if they have any thoughts on that, to see whether or not they think that would be something that would fit under D, so we're possibly adding an eleven insurance requirements.
Thank you, Dave, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I like that.
Good, good call, Mitch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as far as, you know, disc, usually in forested land, it could be sixty-one. And that's every ten years that they have to have it, so.
Well, I, I, I think Mitch's question is that if, if the accessory ends up becoming the primary.
Right.
Right.
But is it helping out the rest of the farm, you don't want to just, you know? That one particular part of partial land or what's doing there, it's the combined whole farm.
No, I get that, Dick, I guess my only concern is that, you know, look, some of these accessory uses and, and the different uses that, that are listed here, it becomes an issue of, you know, we have almost no commercial enterprise to offset our, our residential rates and our residential taxes. You know, if we start having entities that set up businesses where this is their primary function, I think the town has the right to collect those commercial taxes to offset the residential burden. Is that, is that not?
But with that. That would bring you into an area where you are no longer an accessory to the farm.
Correct.
Well, that's correct. That's my point exactly.
So you're saying that we need to have something that defines that in the quote?
Well.
Isn't that, wouldn't that be covered under the initial, I get Mitch's question because I could, what I keep thinking, and again, I'm sort of thinking down the road is that you use a 61A property to become a commercial endeavor. And that's not, I think, what we're trying to do here. We're trying to give the farmer or farming property an ancillary income to what they're already, you know, using their property for. And I get it, I'm just not sure if we keep the definition.
Are we doing it just, you know, a one-time shot? You know, you're having this festival or whatever you want to call it and for one week?
That was, you know, sort of like my question on this site plan review. If they get site plan approval, let's say for either number one or number two. Is that for a particular event? Or does that mean, you know, they get site plan review now, okay, you can hold as many weddings as you want to?
Right, I can, just to jump in, so the board can put reasonable conditions on its site plan approval, including for duration. Off of the number of events, the hours of operation, the number of parking spaces required, so forth and so on. Is the number of porta-potties and all that. So anything, any site plan aspect, the board can condition. You can have, you can condition for the number of events and also for time. If the board has some concern that an enterprise might be trying to backdoor it, if you will. Then a condition for time would be a check. So if the applicant needs to come back, say in five years, and that there have been complaints in the meantime. Or anything like that, then the permit does not have to be re-granted and then it becomes a zoning enforcement matter purely.
And David, that's a question I've got because I keep thinking of of working for the, or helping the fire brigade for, you know, like a liquor permit from the town. We're not, we're actually just doing a review and there'd be conditions with it. We wouldn't be issuing a permit, correct?
The board would be granting a site plan approval for a particular number of uses. With respect to these requirements shown under D.
Yeah, okay, alright.
And to go back to whether it becomes principal, if it becomes a principal use, it's going to fall under prohibited up here under C. At which point you know it's a zoning violation. So I think there's some checks to be had here.
Who, who, Dave checks that, the principal, because realistically, we're talking about how many properties right now are considered commercial farms of the town? I mean, there really aren't that many. You know, these accessory uses, I can see them becoming popular. More so popular than some of the primary uses of this farmland. I mean, who is checking and verifying that and validating it?
Right, so up above in this document. There is a applicability section. Which, I'm sorry, there is a permit procedure section. So if you go back to four up here, I just, I'm not gonna, I'll just recite it because we're almost at the end of our time here. But if it's as of right use, believed to be as of right. The proponent has to register that use in writing with the agricultural commission. Which, if there's any questions, if it's a narrow case, it appears that they're trying to skirt and jam in a purely commercial use on the back of this bylaw, the questions get answered at that point. Their proposal could well fall apart at that point. If it needs a site plan review, then we're into a public hearing process. And we're into the section below here under D for things that the planning board would be looking into.
Like the above, it's kind of like a self-certification, right? As to what's accessory and what isn't?
Well, I think it's more than that. I think if the applicant does something in writing to the agricultural commission. And the agricultural commission is not happy or needs additional information, then a conversation would happen where I suppose there'd be some substantiation of the use. You know, if it's a local enterprise, that's a well-known local enterprise and we know who these folks are under the, you know, because we know our neighbors. Then there might be less of a concern with an entity coming in from the outside who may not have the community's interest at heart.
Well, sure, it's not, you know, my concern isn't the community's interest, it's that, you know, the ag commission that's looking at this. Those are the folks that are going to be applying for these uses. So I mean, it is a self-certification process and you didn't really answer the question as to who is determining accessory versus primary in that case. I mean, it just, it's a little bit vague to me.
Well, I think also, and yes, in addition to that, it's also in writing to the planning office. So we can, we will convene our building commissioner and look at something along with the agricultural commission. I don't think, I'm hoping that there won't be free passes to quit things that are, which should be questioned. So, you know. That's the process that we have at this point.
Okay, so the master general law says there is a minimum you have to have in order to be a commercial farm. So let's say it was one acre of crop like corn, right? So you have one acre of corn, but 50 acres designated for a disc golf course, which makes 20 times more than what you would make from selling that corn. Is that kind of a loophole?
No, a use like that would not be allowed under this bylaw.
But if you meet the minimum requirements of having a farm. And you're, you're become a registered farm. What's to stop you?
It's no longer subordinate.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to play devil's advocate here.
Yeah. And this is, this is where the ag commission and the planning board would come in. I think Sean, to your question is that, you know, they start off, you know, let's just say a pumpkin stand. And then they find out that pumpkin stand is making 10 times more and they expand it. That's where, that's where there's got to be some checks and balances. To be able to stop it from expanding and becoming no longer subordinate but primary.
And that probably the farmer may turn around, wow, didn't know that, and take that piece of property off of it.
Yeah.
Like solar, these accessory uses. I mean, I didn't see solar anywhere in the list.
Yeah, that's a different bylaw.
And a lot, a lot of the, MDR will not, if you have API, you are not allowed to have solar on your property.
Okay.
Dick, I'm glad you mentioned MDR. Just to come back to the 61A land for a second. In addition to a site plan review from the planning board. The applicant is also going to need other permissions if it's, if it's, if the land has agricultural preservation. Dick, correct me if I'm wrong, but the applicant may need special permits from MDR to allow and engage in these uses that are listed here as well.
That is correct.
So it's not just, so I guess if you're looking for another level of, is the use allowed? At least in the lands that are under agricultural preservation, there's an MDR which would have the authority to issue a permit as well. Correct.
Okay, good. How much time, how much time do we have left, David? 10 minutes. Alright, I'll hold off and let it go through. I got, I got the big question on the timetable.
I would be agreeable to going a few minutes, few minutes over. Anyway. So. But it seems like we've kind of gone around in a lot of circles and I'm getting dizzy. So. You willing, is the group willing to table, table the questions, further questionings on this article? I think we're going to have to have one more meeting anyway to review this.
Yeah, I'm willing to go ahead and.
Or if you're willing to say it's fine, that's okay too.
Well, at the moment, I'm okay with this.
Yeah, so am I. I mean, the prohibited accessory uses C sort of, sort of trump, trump Bs.
Yeah.
If B gets too large or takes up a larger percentage of the farm, C basically will trumpet. I'm not sure if we have time for another meeting. Yeah, that's what I was going to get at, Norm.
That's, that's fine too. And anyway, I'm into. Alright, so everybody agrees that this one is going to stand, it's fine. And C, want to get to the end of this. The following accessory agricultural uses are prohibited, not listed and above customary identical to farming uses or uses otherwise prohibited. Any comment?
No.
I think that's the catch-all that gives the bylaw its teeth.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree. And. D, where the site plan review is required for an accessory agricultural use, the planning board shall be the site plan review authority and otherwise applicable site plan requirements for the underlying zoning district shall apply. Further, the planning board at its discretion shall make a finding whether each site plan element listed below has been adequately addressed by the applicant. Noise control, off-street parking. Loading areas. Traffic control measures for roads leading to facilities, refuse, disposal, sanitation. Crowd control and security, fire protection, lightning, screen from neighborhood properties.
I think we, I think we added Marilyn 11 insurance, which was going to be checked on.
Okay. I'm not, there's something going on in here. Boiler issues in our house, insurance, okay. Planning board may impose responsible conditions upon any site plan approval. And sever, severability, if any provision, etc. Any questions? We have, I'm adding 11 insurance and the rest of it's pretty much standard. All set? Any comments?
The only comment I've got Marilyn is the timetable because I'm doing my math and I, they're placing this warrant next Monday. We don't have a, we don't have a public hearing yet. The planning board hasn't approved it. There's a lot of things that still have to happen. And I'm just wondering the timetable, that's what my, my big question is on this. I think Dave has a schedule for that. Alright.
Right, so the, so we have, we have about a month-long comment period to end on the 17th of June. There's a planning board hearing scheduled on June 17. The idea behind the public comment period is to gather as much information from the public as possible to see if anybody has issues or concerns or what have you with this. In addition, we'll be prepared to make a presentation to the FINCOM and the select board on this bylaw as well. I'm discussing a schedule with Mike Nicholson. Whether there's the Monday, next Monday or a Thursday next week. Or the next meeting after that before the FINCOM and the select board.
Because Dave, my question is, the warrant has to be posted to the town on the 14th. By law, because it's got to be two, it's got to be two weeks before the town meeting. So if we wait till the 17th, we're three days late for the posting.
Well, there's a select board meeting tomorrow.
Let me check with the town administrator on this, on that issue.
I just wanted to bring that up to you because if I'm not mistaken, the 14th of June, everything's got to be posted two weeks before the town meeting and that means we'd have to have everything in place by the 14th. We may be able to have a public hearing after the warrant is posted. Okay, I just, I wanted to just bring that up is all I wanted to do.
Yeah, I think a meeting can be had after the warrant is posted. I think it's a matter of it being posted. If, you know, I think that there's underlying support for this with the agcom and we're having this conversation here at the open comment period and presentations to the select board and the FINCOM.
And this is probably a question for Mike, but my understanding was when the warrant's posted, nothing can be changed. So if we got public comment and it was any finagling we had to do with this. We can't do it after it's been posted. And maybe I'm wrong, that's, I'm not an expert on this. Yeah. Unless there was an amendment on the floor. Yep, that's, that's what I was going to say, Norm. My official knowledge base just told me that.
And can I, speaking on behalf of a private citizen, but I have the hunch that the select board wants to avoid issues like the post bylaw where there were different things and motions happening on the floor. It would be nice to have everybody on the same page prior to town meeting.
Agreed.
Alright, I'll talk to Mike to see. To see about this question. We have to move the hearing. Before, what date again?
The 14th of June. Mitch, I think that's correct.
I'm sorry, what?
I think Mitch, the warrants have to be posted on the 14th, two weeks before the meeting, if I remember right.
If that were the case, it would be the 13th because I thought the meeting was the 27th. Is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct. It's that Saturday, the 13th.
We were, we were looking, or not we, but the select board was looking to post the warrant, article items on the meeting on the first, which is on Monday.
So that the FINCOM can have time to look at and everything else.
Okay, well, that gives us a big problem then.
Look, I'm not sure if, you know, I know this was kind of like, again, Dave, you put a lot of work into this, it's very well written and you know, I hope my questions don't give you, you know, the otherwise impression. I just want to make sure that we go about this the right way and that everyone has the proper time to review and go through this. Prior to the select board looking at, at posting it, just because it seems like this happens every year with something.
Okay, that's it. That's the only thing I wanted to bring up was the timetable because I was looking at the calendar and I'm going, oh boy. Alright, I mean, we could have a public hearing and nobody shows up. How many times does that happen? Yeah. Especially on Zoom. Yeah, that's true. We can't have a loop. Yeah, you're right. I forgot about that, Norm. Good point.
Okay.
That's it for me. I'll zip it up.
Remembering that I can't see anybody here. Dave, is that comply with your needs from this committee?
Yes, I appreciate the questions and comments from this board tonight. Thank you very much.
I will make a motion to forward this agricultural accessory use bylaw with its changes to the planning board for a public hearing. Second.
All those in favor? What I need to, want to roll call, Norm?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to roll call and Norm?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
And I forgot someone.
Oh, it's just me, Marilyn. Aye, Tim. I don't know, I don't know how unforgettable. I'm a pain in the rear end.
I know, I can't, I can't believe I forgot you. Aye. There's no more discussion. I will attend to a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, I had one question. Should, should we talk about, if, if we're going to accelerate this, depending on what Mike said, should we talk about a planning board meeting earlier than our standard one? Norm?
I, I think, you know, I would just as soon leave that up to Dave. I think he has, you know, better communication, and, and, you know, a better idea of how to make things work than we would. And to be perfectly honest with you, you know, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'll certainly try my best to make myself available, whatever the case may be.
Okay, I just, I thought I'd bring it up, because if we, I don't want to get back to into a corner trying to stick to a standard meeting schedule.
Yeah.
No, I think if we have to have a special meeting, then we would schedule a special meeting.
Good enough.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I saw more.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.